Sorry for the slightly late delay, but we got back-to-back meetings this afternoon. The time is 4:08. This is a special meeting of the Durango City Council. We begin with a roll call.
Counselor Bettin?
Here.
Counselor Brooke? Counselor Yusef?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here. The first item of business is continuation of a public hearing that we began last week concerning the extension, possible extension of the contract between the city of Durango and the Durango Fire Protection District. And I believe we've got additional input from the staff before we reopen the public hearing.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just outline what I think the first few steps are so that everyone participating would know. We have a speakerphone set up in our bond council. Dee Weiser with Butler Snow is on the line. We'll call on him in just a minute. When Dee is finished with his input, I would ask Mayor, with your consent, that the fire chief be allowed to make his presentation. And then I see people in the audience who are here also to give a public presentation. Then we can move through those folks who want to go on the record. But I think it'd be important for the people who want to give presentations to hear our bond council and the fire chief so they can hone in on what we're actually doing and maybe some of their questions may be answered by those two presentations. And then as customary, when all the, those who are here exhaust their presentations, you would close the public hearing and then open it up for the city council to discuss among yourselves, which may include some questions for Mr. Weiser, Mr. Nelson, or the fire chief, or any other staff. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have a second hearing nominally scheduled for 5:00 PM. I think we would be willing to be flexible about that depending on the amount of input that we're receiving from the public on the first one. The two items are not unrelated, but they are not necessarily tied at the hip. So at this point, I would invite Dee Weiser to join us and tell us more.
Okay, Dee, you're on.
Mayor, remember your council. Let me check and see if you can all hear me all right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I've been working with Ron and Dirk and the staff on the question of what sort of ballot question might be submitted to the city's voters related to the fire contract. And an item which we identified as a challenge under the charter is that Section 21 of Article 5 of the charter establishes a debt limit. And that debt limit is for any indebtedness that's payable in whole or in part from add-on property taxes or to which the city's full faith and credit is pledged. The debt limit is 10% of the assessed value of the taxable property in the city at the time that the relevant indebtedness is entered into. This was not an issue when the contract was previously approved by the voters because it was not payable from the property taxes of the city nor was the city's full faith and credit pledged to the contract. The proposal to potentially submit to voters a property tax increase and use that property tax to make payments under the contract implicates Article 5, Section 21 of the charter. And as I understand it from the staff, the way the numbers would work, frankly, you couldn't extend the contract much beyond its current term, given the city's current assessed valuation. This is not a provision of the charter that can simply be waived by the voters absent an actual charter amendment. So, Ron, maybe I should stop there and see if that covers the territory. If you want, if there's some other question I should answer.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to take questions now from the council?
I think we probably should because there may be direct questions for Mr. Weiser before we open it up to the public.
All right.
So we cannot extend beyond the 11 years of the contract as a result of this article?
That's my understanding. I don't know if Drew or Dirk had that information, but the last conversation we had, I think the numbers are such that we wouldn't go much beyond the existing 11-year remaining term.
Because of using property taxes?
Yes.
Our mill levy increase, for example. Okay.
Right.
Under the current agreement, we are paying the contract with the fire district out of our general fund.
Correct.
Part of the revenue for the general fund comes from the existing 2.5-mill levy. And so what would make this one different?
The current contract expressly disclaims the use of property tax revenues or making the property tax revenues a pledge to the contract and expressly says it's not a pledge of the full faith and credit. I think that really, as I understand the history of the contract, it was intended to be paid from sales tax revenues.
Yes.
Could you create another contract?
That's a possibility that the chief raised the other day. I guess it's possible, but we'd have to figure out how to separate what's being provided by the fire district in terms of the two contracts. They're basically sort of separating services or capital purposes. An easy way to think about it would be if you could do a contract just for capital related to the fire station, that might be easier to implement than try and separate out the services that the district's providing.
Even so, that would require alteration of the existing contract?
That's correct.
So what would that sound like on a ballot? Do you have any idea?
Well, I think that, you know, the ballot language for the tax increase, I think, is relatively straightforward. It, you know, shows city taxes being increased for purposes of making payments under a contract with the fire district. I think the harder question is if we're going to also ask the voters to approve an extension to the term or increase in the fee as an amendment to the original contract or by entering into a new contract for some separate discreet services being provided. We'd have to figure out what that is. We'd actually have to sit down and write a contract, which probably creates a bit of a challenge in terms of timing since the election question has to be certified no later than September 8th to the county clerk.
So what would you advise?
Well, I think there's probably a range of choices. One choice would be to try and explore how we might divide up the contract and see if we can get that done in time for an election this year. Another choice would be not to do the election this year, but spend more time at this and think about an election next year. We've talked about, you know, even the possibility of having the city get back into the fire district and eliminating the need for the contract entirely. That would require a citywide vote and could be done, you know, at the district's either the November election or the district mayor election. There may be a few other choices, but those are the choices we discussed. And I think it's really a question for you as policymakers about what direction you'd want to go in.
I would observe that the third option of the city re-entering the fire protection district would be operationally superior. But the challenge to the city and city residents and businesses is that we currently pay 2.5 mills for our property tax. The current, we pay the fire district as though we were paying 5.7 mills and we're making up the difference out of our general revenue and sales taxes. It would be altogether fair if everybody in the larger district paid the same mill levy for the same services. It would preclude the kind of semi-impasse that we are facing at present. But it's also true that twice before, city residents or city voters have rejected that sales tax or property tax increase because it's such a steep increase and also because of the property tax structure in the state of Colorado owing to the Gallagher Amendment means that the businesses pay roughly four times the property tax that residences pay. And so if you're paying, what is it, seven, I think it's going to turn out to be 7% or so under the new adjustment from Gallagher, the businesses are paying ballpark 28%. So there's a huge disparity. And of course, we have a huge amount of retail business, retail and other business downtown that would be subject to this. It would be a real tough, it would be a really tough pill to swallow. So, and it would be a challenging thing and one that would require, I think, extensive public conversation before we would want to go there.
Mayor, for the benefit of those viewing, whether they're here or on TV, the city has very low debt. In fact, we don't have any general obligation debt that I'm aware of. Is that correct? We do have the library in Florita Road, and we'll be paying off the rec center. Those are all sales tax measures. So as the council looks forward and reviews what's coming at them, which would be stormwater utility master plan, we just completed a facilities master plan, I'm losing track of all the other master plans, but those will require some type of funding. If we use all of our bonding capacity on this issue, we would then eliminate some choices going forward through other city projects for the next 11 years.
Yeah, in fact, Dee, this is Dirk Nelson. Would you, I'm not sure you actually included that as part of your discussion, but maybe you could take a second and explain to council what impact having an extension of the agreement, even for the 11-year term, would have on the city's bonding capacity?
Yes. So in effect, given how the numbers work out, absent some significant growth in the city's assessed value, you wouldn't have any additional capacity to issue general obligation bond or other city priorities. You could do other file tax bond financing or other utility financing or annual appropriation, lease purchase financing, but general obligation bond would be out of the mix given this provision of the charter.
Because of 10% of the assessed value of the taxable value? Is that what it was?
Yes.
I didn't hear that question.
It's 10% of the overall assessed value of all property in the city?
That's right.
And then the amounts are compounded over the entire amount of the debt, so you have a debt limit to that amount, which we have some numbers on that, probably.
The total assessed valuation currently is somewhere in the neighborhood of 540 million, so 10% would be around 54 million. Is that correct? Okay. 524 million and it'd be 52.4 million.
So we would aggregate the payments to be made under the relevant contract over the term, and that would tell us how much of the debt capacity we've used up.
52 million.
So just to make sure that's clear, I just want to ask a question. So our maximum amount of bondable capacity would be at the 52.4 million. And just for example, the extension on this agreement with the fire district would have a value of, what's the anticipated value of that extension, you know?
That's exactly what I was.
I think we will be getting, we will be getting to that, which I mean, clearly a very important question.
Well, we're paying out about 3 million, a little more than 3 billion a year, so 3 million times 11 is how much you eat up.
So we run out of money?
Well, plus that doesn't include the 1.3. I mean, if you authorize an increase in the payment of the contract, which would be about another 1.3, then again, the numbers are such that this 52 million would allow for an extension of the contract in the neighborhood of 11 years, which is, when the original contract was 15, we're in the fourth year of that, so there's 11 years left. So it doesn't, the import of it is, is that you don't get, you can't extend it anything beyond the current term.
Right.
But on top of that, by using the mill levy funding, you tie up your bonding capacity, which is not the case now. Is that clear?
It's clear.
How often does the city review the total assets, the assessed value?
The assessed value is done by the assessor's office, and that's every.
Every, annually, year. So it could change. It could go up next year, let's say?
It could go up, but in talking to Mr. Weiser, his opinion is that that number gets set at today's assessed value. So, and Dee, chime in please if I'm misrepresenting what you've said, but in the future, absolutely, as the bill levy increase, or excuse me, the assessed value increases, then your bonding capacity would increase slightly with that increase in assessed value.
So for example, the new hotel coming in on Camino de Real, and if there was redevelopment on North Main, let's say, that would increase the assessed value of the city?
Yes.
And so if we were to wait a year, then possibly the assessed value would go up?
Possibly.
Well, structurally speaking, though, I think proportionally, it'd still be very difficult to enter into this multi-year extension, correct? No matter how we could anticipate that assessed value going up, it just wouldn't go up percentage-wise enough to enable you to have enough money to spend on bonding capacity.
It would, it would, over a number of years, build up some additional bonding capacity.
Some more capacity.
But it wouldn't be anything like the $50 million. I mean, you know, what's the, you know, take a really optimistic rate of growth and you double that, it takes seven years to double that value, and I don't think we're in that kind of environment. So it's a generation before we recover that amount of bonding capacity.
So what I'm hearing is that we cannot go to the voters to extend the contract? Is that what I'm hearing? Because of this indebtedness?
Well, it's a combination, I think. It's both the extension and the mill levy. If you were able to extend the contract and make the payments from a source other than the mill levy, you wouldn't have this charter problem. But as I understand it from the staff, the mill levy is an important feature.
And that is because our sales tax revenue is down. Our sales tax revenue is a roller coaster ride, and it's been flat this year. It was flat last year. So if we were able to pay it out of the sales tax revenue, we can't. Is that what I'm hearing, city manager? We don't have the funding to pay it out of the sales tax revenue without cutting something else.
The characteristics of revenue differ. A property tax revenue is pretty stable, and it does not change from year to year. However, if you were the county or the fire district and half of your assessed value was from oil and gas, that's a high risk factor because that is very volatile. But within the city, we don't have that. We only have three gas wells, so it's not a problem for us. However, we are dependent on sales tax. And I think if you look at the city's history, we run in cycles.
Yes.
And chances are in the next 11 years, we're going to hit a cycle where we will have less revenue in the current year than we did the preceding year, which causes us to cut back. So that's exactly what happened in '09.
Yes.
And we're likely to see that again. That's just the way the economy works.
And we have a total of 52.4 million to handle all of our needs. Stormwater, drainage, facility needs, fire.
For property tax-based.
Property tax.
Yes.
Property tax-based debt.
And there, you know, there are maybe some other options that we will be talking about in the future, but this is a, this is a constraint.
Well, underlying the conversation is that at this meeting, the reason we continued the last meeting was in the hopes that there would be an opportunity to have an agreement in place that we could review at this meeting, that we might have an opportunity to vote on. Sounds like, given this new information, or at least this exposed information, that that at least is not going to happen, so we don't have anything to vote on relative to the agreement. And then I would just ask, you know, one of the suggestions from Mr. Weiser that is a possible solution was, can we get this done, this next level, other sort of deal together in time for this very accelerated timeframe to get on ballot? And does anyone feel that that's reasonable within the city staff?
Well, we can do anything if the city council directs us within, you know, human limits. Next Tuesday is the last regular meeting for the council in August. So that would be a time that you could do the first reading. And then we have to have, well, assuming we get the ballot language in front of you. And then our deadline is the September 5th council meeting to get the second reading done, because the drop dead date is September the 8th. So correct me if I get these dates wrong.
That's right.
And September 8th is a week, a month from now.
Okay, so I heard we can't go for an extension, and we can't go for a property mill levy. So what other choices are? I mean, what other contract are you talking about?
He was talking about dividing up the contract. Could he talk about that? That was option one, dividing up the contract. That would be the fast option, and I don't, could you just talk about that a little bit, Dee?
Sorry, Ron, I didn't see all that. Could you repeat that?
You had mentioned, yeah.
The counselor, Yusef, was asking you to explain if you divided up the contract, how would that look when it came back to the council?
Well, it seems a bit of a challenge to the extent that we'd be trying to divide up services. As I thought about it, it's easier to think about on the fire station side that, you know, maybe we put it in a separate contract that the district's going to finance a fire station by way of a lease purchase agreement, and the city's going to contribute property tax dollars on an annual basis to help service the debt represented by that lease purchase agreement financing. That's a, as simple a way as I could think about it. If we start talking about what services they're providing in the city, that seems harder to divide it up. Maybe not impossible, but I think Dirk and I and others would probably have to give more thought to how to make that happen.
Yeah, and someone asked if that's practical. I would be bluntly honest and say I don't see how that would happen in the next, it would have to happen within the next week.
It's one week.
Which would mean that we would have to have a meeting of the minds between city council and the fire district board. That would be a very, I suppose if we skipped all sleep activities in the next 10 days, we might be able to get that done. But in the real world is, this is a sort of a brand-new idea. This issue just came up, you know, council just approved retaining bond council. All of this is very recent, you know? Fire district voted on the 2.5-mill levy increase just, I think, literally within the last week. So all of this is kind of coming to a point, so I think it would be a real challenge to, we would be talking about completely redrafting the contract, and I wasn't involved in those last negotiations, but I guess is it took months to negotiate that agreement, and these things do tend to go that way, so.
Given the long-term nature of this contracting, the amount of money and the services we're talking about, I can't imagine being comfortable with trying to rush that process.
It would be very rushed at best.
And, you know, in real life, I have found that if you get rushed, you make mistakes or there's unintended consequences. And as a city councilor, I'm still trying to understand, I understood what you said, Dee, about the first two. The second, this new contract situation, I'm not sure it can be solved in one week. And I'm very hesitant to go forward with this as a city councilor. I think we need to devote more time and understanding of what we're asking of our voters and to try to make all these timelines seems very difficult in my brain.
Could I suggest something? If we're down with questions for Mr. Weiser, then maybe we should have the fire chief make his presentation and hear from the public before making our decision at the council level.
Sure.
Yeah, and I would say that we were going to invite Dee back at 5:00, because as you recall, we have another hearing at 5:00 o'clock, really on the mill levy question. So I think what he's going to say is substantially similar, but we may have additional questions. Dee, I don't know whether you want to stay on the line or whether we want to aggregate questions and then call you back closer to 5:00 o'clock. What works better for your schedule?
Either way, I do have to transition because I've got another council meeting to go to, but either way is fine, Dirk.
Okay. Dee, what is your time constraint? I, there's a lot of people in the room today. It's now 25 minutes to 5:00. We have a presentation from the chief coming up. I'm expecting there will be more than a few questions, and so I'm trying to see how to manage the timeline for the rest of the meeting.
I have a, I have a 6:00 council meeting in one of the Denver suburbs, so I'll have to leave the office no later than 5:30, but I could do it by cellphone while I'm in transit too.
Could I suggest that when you're available, again, can you text Mary Beth, and then she can let you know where we are in the process?
Okay.
And then we can make a decision on whether we put you on the phone or maybe it's not going to meet your timeline.
Yeah, Mary Beth, can I just email you? Is that right?
Yep, that works.
Okay. I'll hop off and then I'll email Mary Beth what you're on, and she can let me know.
Okay. Thank you so much for your input.
Thank you.
You bet. Bye-bye.
Chief Doughty, please come on.
President, city council, staff, thank you for hearing from me again. It seems like we're spending an awful lot of time together. My name's Hal Doughty. I'm the fire chief with Durango Fire Protection District, and I'm here today to talk with you about two issues. I think that the first is the possibility of extension of the contract, and second, as a later topic, is, has to do with the 2.5-mill increase that we'd like to ask for. And I represented to you last week that it probably made sense for us to contain those discussions in one presentation. I would suggest that based on the new information that's come up, I think that I may have a suggestion that would be appealing to all of you that could really expediate the first question, and that is, from the fire district's perspective, the reason that it was appealing to have a contract in the first place rather than go year to year was based on the fact that. a contract in the first place rather than go year to year was based on the fact that that allowed us to have some sort of a projection of the long-term life in our existence in the city of Durango. And that allowed us to do things like have a capital improvements plan and planning for financial elements into years to come rather than going year to year as we were doing for quite some time, which was uncomfortable, was inconvenient, it certainly didn't present a picture of stability, I don't think, to our constituency or yours. And so it made a great deal of sense to contract with you for the long term. And I think that in retrospect, what we anticipated happening with these two questions and the reason why these two hearings were set up was based on the fact that we believed that it was in the city's best interest to extend the length of the contract for a long period of time. And we anticipated entering into an agreement with the city based on agreeing on a location for a new downtown fire station. And we also anticipated the need to have a term of contract that was in excess of a financing period so that the district could finance that project. And I think that, and the results of a great deal of work that's been done by city staff, by city manager, bond council, and the city's attorney, I think that some things are clear and evident. And Ms. Marbury, you gave me some advice at our last work session that said, "Don't complicate this issue." And it's clear to me that we've gotten really complicated. So I'd like to throw some basic premises out that I think that we've certainly talked through with city staff and that the fire district board has talked through. And I'd like to throw them out. And these things may well speak to a great deal of the topics that many of our guests are here to speak about as well. I think that it's clear that it's probably an impossibility to think that we're going to get to the point where we could agree on some sort of a land deal and the opportunity to build a fire station. And somehow, that conversation got drawn into this one. And I think that it was because of the element of needing to extend the contract to be able to finance a new station. That probably is true no matter where the station goes. And so I don't think it's a mistruth in any sense of the word, but I think that it's really complicating this issue. The location of the fire station, I'm in agreement. There have been a great deal of ideas and new information that's come to the surface. Some suggestions from last week, Mr. Wheeler suggested possibly a study. We're not opposed to that, although we feel like we've done a great deal of work between your board and mine. And so I think that, in the interest of reducing the complication associated with this, I really want to make it clear that the fire district's intent here is not to have any element that we're here to talk about tonight be contingent one way or the other on the land deal or the location of a fire station. I think that your bond council has made it exceedingly clear that there are some drastic limitations associated with your ability to extend that contract. And while I think extension of the contract is in your best interest, I also think that we obviously have to follow the law. And so maybe we can serve your best interests in another way than extending for some period of time. My conversation with the city attorney and city staff today included a recommendation that we just take the question of extending the contract off the table. And I think that the extension of the contract, probably that's a necessity. But I think that one of the things that was represented by the city attorney, and if I'm misstating this, sir, please you correct me, but his feeling is that we may still need to ask a question about the contract. And that question would be, will you allow the verbiage of the contract to be changed so that the city is, in the event of a success on increasing the mill rate, can the city continue in their contract at 8.2 mills rather than 5.7 mills? And so it's my understanding that that would be the modification to the contract that would be needed should our efforts to increase our mill rate be successful. That's my understanding of where we are with the contract extension. I would like to point out one other element, and that is that as you pay toward that debt that we achieve by contracting with you each year, your debt ceiling is reduced. In other words, you've got to add up all the years remaining on the contract times the amount of money that you intend to pay for fire protection. But each year that you pay that, that debt ceiling comes down. So in a much more rapid fashion than waiting for your assessed value to go up so much that one-tenth of that makes a difference in your debt ceiling. The other possibility is you look at it as, in each year that you pay $4.5 million, let's say for fire and EMS protection at 8.2 mills, $4.5 million comes off of the debt ceiling that you've established of the remaining indebtedness of that contract. And so that would be a much quicker way of looking at the reduction of your debt than waiting for your assessed value to go up. Outside of that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have related to the extension of the contract. And as promised, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you on our next issue. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And just to, I think we may need you to come back. And your presentation has to do with the two-and-a-half mills?
It does.
Okay.
Yes.
And is that, that's basically the presentation you made last week?
Yes, although I've updated, I've updated it based on the new information that we have. And I've also updated it based on questions that you had for me last week that I was, didn't have the ability to be clear about, so I've gotten new information and updated charts and data.
All right, I think best then to defer that section. And at this point, I will open the public hearing for, the hearing, reopen the public hearing for input. People are not rushing to the podium. You may, please do.
Good afternoon, members of the city council, city manager, staff, Mr. Nelson.
Please, name and address, please.
My name is Frank Lockwood. My address is 122 Rock Ridge Drive, Durango, Colorado. I'm the executive director of the Durango Area Tourism Office, better known as DDo. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit corporation with contracts with both the city and the county to provide visitor marketing of Durango and the surrounding area to the rest of the world. According to Region 9 Economic Development District, tourism is now the number-one industry in our county. It is responsible for more jobs than any other industry. In fact, the state of Colorado considers its tourism office to be an integral part of, integral component of its overall economic development efforts, spending $19 million out of the state budget per year on tourism marketing. My sole purpose in testifying today is to simply ask the members of the city council to consider the property in question and its value, if developed properly, to be a potentially significant driver of Durango's future economy. We all value the importance and role of our fire department, and I and my family are eternally grateful for the research they did in the Lightner Creek fire. We respectfully disagree that placing a fire station on the train parking lot, as it's called, is really the highest and best use. Durango is at a crossroads regarding its economic future with lots of challenges ahead. If we don't invest in our future, it will not be the one that we want. I have recently returned from both statewide and Western United States conferences of tourism organizations, and the most common investment made by cities and towns is a performing arts or business conference center. We do not have this in this town. Towns half our size are building them, thereby opening a huge market that we cannot tap into. A market that can help even out our lopsided tourist season where our merchants make all of their money in five months and hold on for seven months, causing havoc to families, business stability, and future business investment. I'm simply asking you to carefully consider what may be lost if we take this obviously centrally-located piece of real estate out of Durango's economic future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Any questions? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this? I think we've seen Mr. Wheeler before.
Yeah, I'm still Tim Wheeler.
Yes.
I still live at 189 Green Lane. Thank you for having the hearing. Just a quick aside, I know last week I spoke to all of you and you had to hear me three times, for which I apologize. And I get quite passionate with some of these things sometimes, so if you feel I didn't comport in any way to any kind of professional presentation, I extend an apology. I went back and looked at my testimony, which is always humbling, so that's why I say that. You know, I just have some questions at this point. I think you understand from last week's presentation that, and my questions and my presentation, where I stand on that piece of property. So, and by the way, I know a 500 limit. I do represent an organization, so I would request 10 if I need it, and I apologize if I have to take that.
More or less.
So, new information occurred tonight and the chief came up and made, it sounded like he was withdrawing the idea of a contract extension, which is what this hearing is about. I'm not sure if that's the case, and I don't think it's my place to ask that tonight. But you as council was good, that's what I thought I heard. So some clarification on that would be helpful because maybe the other comments don't matter so much at this point. But my understanding is that this agreement would result in the city allocating the parts of which is the train parking lot to the fire department, the DFPD, for use for a new station, for a new downtown station. And on that basis, I asked some questions about how will the train lot be transferred? Will it be a sale, a lease, or a gift? What are the terms of that transfer? What's the duration of whatever the term or agreement is? Have you calculated what is the economic return to the city and the city residents under the, whatever the terms and conditions are? Have you calculated what an alternative use of that location might be? As some of us have already pointed out, there are other possible uses, higher and better uses perhaps. How does this location compare to others in respect of these same questions? So I know the chief, I've been to some of his presentations where he's talked about other locations that have been looked at. We, I suggested another one last week. There are others that other people have as suggestions. So understanding what the impact for the city for those locations as use of a fire station versus alternative uses seems to me to be a calculation that we can all benefit from. And so I would ask if that has been done or can it be done? What happens to the current parking lot if this, train parking lot, if a fire station is built there? Who is responsible for replacing those parking spaces or how do they get replaced? I'm certain maybe, well, maybe not certain, but I'm hoping that you have grappled with these questions and that you would have answers to them. If not, then I would suggest maybe, like perhaps the chief was suggesting, that we defer this contract extension and we all together as a public and the city staff and city councillors and fire department explore those questions and find out what would be the best solution for all of us. You know, one of the reasons that, of the new information, the new information brought forth, one of the reasons why many of us feel that it's really important that we get this right on this prime piece of property, because you're grappling with a limit to the ability to reinvest in our community based on the assets that we have. Because it's based on property values, assessed property values. I would just offer the thought that perhaps putting a fire station, which is needed for the downtown and which I and the organization I represent wholly support, but putting it on that location is actually going perhaps backwards in terms of increasing property values and therefore providing the ability for some of the other things like stormwater management debt or other debt that might need to be incurred to maintain the infrastructure of our community. Our goal is to help the community improve its economic situation. And we just think that this particular use, this particular piece of land, needs to be brought forth and really studied and looked at. Again, I appreciate very much your patience with me and hope that if you have any questions, I could answer them.
I had one. Did you go to the open house that the fire department sponsored?
No, I was out of town.
Okay.
But one of our members of our committee that works on this, Ted Wright, was there and did have the presentation. He did report to us. We have a small committee that advocates for issues and things around local first members.
I heard you talk about Santa Rita, for example, last week. And so I would ask the chief, you know, it's not me to say where our department's supposed to be because they have all their special needs, et cetera, but maybe the chief can come back later and address that Santa Rita proposal. I don't know if he's had time to study it or not, but you brought it up. You said there's other locations, so where are those other locations?
Well, I think there are, there are multiple locations depending upon what criteria you might use. And again, I don't, I don't purport to be an expert on what are the criteria that the fire department necessarily needs. However, that's, I think, some independent study of all of these different locations. Working with both the city and with the chief, we could probably identify some very good locations. There are three that he already identified and brought forth to you. Two, so far, as dogged as I have been in trying to follow this process, I have not heard why the other two have been eliminated and all of a sudden, and that, I apologize, that's the way it seems to me who have been trying to follow the process.
I think the chief can address that.
That all of a sudden, there is a conclusion, an agreement on a particular property without an explanation for why the others. So those two, the one at Santa Rita Park, Santa Rita Park itself, but there's across the road, it's the intersection of Santa Rita Drive and 160. Those are ideas. There are other potential locations as well. And so I just think it would be wise for us to think and work together to figure out pros and cons for those. I don't have a perfect solution for you, I think.
I know.
So, I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
It did, and I guess the chief is going to have to answer your questions. So I'll run it up to him.
I do appreciate that, but the questions that I provided here are really directed to city council in the sense that these are things I think the public wants to know about a lot, which at this moment is being considered and is controlled by the city and owned by the city. Any other?
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, John Mahoney, 1616 Forest Avenue. I'm here as a private citizen. I am a member of the bid board, but I'm not representing those, that organization today. I don't entirely understand some of the tax ramifications and the Gallagher Amendment and those sort of things. But to the extent this debate is just about the location of the fire station, that's what I'm here to address. Firstly, I'm 100% for the fire department having a new station. I recognize that the current facility is not up to standard. However, I am concerned that the council is making too quick a decision on the location. And I feel like this whole debate hasn't had a full airing yet and... And I was out of town earlier this year, so I apologize if I missed any meetings. But I think the public, if I'm confused about all the, some of the questions that Mr. Wheeler proposed, I think the public would be as well. In the last 12 months, we've seen the county proposal for road and bridge fail. We've seen the airport proposal fail. And I think if we're moving towards a ballot question, where we're going to ask the public to support increased taxes, unless we have a buy-in from the public, it's going to be very hard to pass. And I think we get that buy-in if we have lots of public meetings and all the questions are answered. And so I would ask that the city council delay their decision on the location of the fire department. I think we can afford to wait a little while, as long as the fire department's working. I know, I know you need a new location as soon as possible. But the corner that's being talked about at the train station is really an iconic piece of real estate in Durango. It's where thousands of tourists enter our town. And a significant building on that site would be very important as a statement about our town, whatever that building might be. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the issue of extending the contract? In that case, I will close the public hearing and ask council for discussion on the issue of extending the contract.
I have a couple of questions for Chief Doty, if he might come back up to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Well, the issue of a different location relative to service calls and timing and so forth has come up quite a few times in this discussion in both the public testimony and also with council and so forth. I wonder if you could illuminate for us. I know there's some heat mapping and some rationale behind that. Help us understand, like, for exist, for example, if you could use this particular spot, there's a location near Santa Rita Park that has been brought up a couple of times.
Sure.
Can you kind of give us an idea of why that type of site may or may not be applicable?
Sure, I'd be glad to. In fact, we've covered this at many public meetings and apologetic that, I suppose, that you guys must have been out of town for all of those as we didn't see you there. But I'd be glad to go over all that again. I would point out that I think that the recommendation that's on the table is, doesn't have anything to do with the fire station location, although clearly that's the emotional issue here. So I'd be, you guys know me, I'll talk all night if you'd like me to.
These folks are here, they haven't heard it, so.
I got you. So actually, specific to the piece of property, Santa Rita Park, we did look into that very extensively. It doesn't meet the parameters for our response characteristics that we need for the downtown core of the heat map. Although District 2 for us, which is our downtown area, covers a great deal of area. The Santa Rita Park is actually the divide for the response parameters between the station that's in Boto Park and the station that covers downtown. Further, if you move the fire station from its current location to the Santa Rita Drive location, which I assume that's the property that you're talking about, actually across 160 from Santa Rita Park, on Santa Rita Drive on the east side, there is room for the fire station there. Although the coverage circle does not work. It puts us much too close to our Station 1, which is in Boto Park, and it leaves a coverage hole. And when I say that, we assess all those things based on the national standards associated with ISO, the insurance services organization who comes in and rates communities' fire services based on their coverage. And so we would lose a great deal of divergence points for the downtown core area, which is arguably a very high value area. So it's likely that a move like that would drive our, would drive our ISO rating up, which would drive up the costs of insurance, specifically for commercial and for residential property within City of Durango. Further, CDOT, in working with the director of CDOT for the local area, Mike McVal, actually came to us and offered that land as a possibility for the location of a fire station, which was the reason that spurred us into specifically looking at that. There are many other locations that we've looked at as well. I had a discussion with John Wells about feasibility of airspace above the parking lot at the Commons Building. I had a conversation with several people about the opportunity to look at lands within that response core area, which basically, when we talk about that, our heat map shows that our station for response characteristic protocol needs to be between College and 14th and Main and Camino, that intersection. And it needs to be between Main Avenue and the river. And the reason for that is public safety issues with crossing over the downtown busy area with the issue of running sirens through Third Ave of College at nighttime, on the weekends, on holidays, and the disruption to those residential areas that we have there has to do with our response times associated with the point that we start. Unlike the police department, we don't get to come to work and then go out on patrol and drive around in our big fire trucks. We have to stay at one location and be ready to respond to any area where there's an emergency. So we have actually looked at many. As it relates to the public meetings that we've held, we assessed three properties and we made those very public at our open house and other places. They were current location of River City Hall, the Camino half of the block that contains the transit center currently, and the railroad parking lot site. And the reason that we looked at those is that neither the city nor the fire district has any extra money for land acquisition. So we determined very quickly that probably acquiring a piece of privately held land without a philanthropic gift or some other advent like that was probably off the table for us to be able to fit within our ability to finance that. So we agreed that we would study very hard the pieces of property that were big enough, told the fire department, that were owned currently by the city as our current contract puts us in a situation where we've got a relationship with the city. And we felt that the opportunity to expand the asset base of the city could be answered by this simple fact. The city would take a piece of land that was arguably worth $3, $3.5 million. The fire district would use our money. And as a reminder, neither their money or my money is really our money. It's your money, it's the citizens' money that we're using to do this, our taxpayers. And so we would add to it about a $9 million asset that would be constructed on that, and the city would then own an asset worth $12 million. Now, I don't know what's about finance. If your stuff's on fire, I'm the guy to call. You need help with your bank, I'm not the guy. But the deal for me was, I was able to offer through a premise like that the opportunity for the city council to see that they would take a $3 million asset they currently held, they would turn it into a $12 million asset that they would hold, and it would be a location designated for fire EMS response in downtown Durango, basically in perpetuity, beyond all of our lives. And so we felt like that was the most sound, financial, and responsible way to go with addressing where do we put the new fire station. I'd like to throw out one other premise, since you got me rolling. Because when I get rolling, you guys know me. And that is, you know, the advent of this term, higher and better use. And I think, I think that, I'd just like to address that for a second. Because I think that there's something that you're missing there if you just take for granted that the entrepreneurs in our community have determined what the higher and better use is for a piece of land in our community. And if you're a financial person, if what matters to you most is money, if you're the kind of person who accumulates things, then I get it about higher and better use and the value of that piece of land. That's not the Durango that I live in. I live in a community that appreciates the outdoors, that wants to experience the river and the mountain, to go skiing, to do all those things. We live in an active community. We live in a community that wants to be outside and wants to be doing things. And so higher and better use, I'm not willing to take on that a higher and better use has any attachment to an amount of money. When you live in a community like this, people get hurt on our river walking through downtown because they're not used to the altitude. And as you say, they've come here from all over the world to visit our town. And we have to have the ability to respond in kind when there's an emergency, be it fire, EMS, or other. So I would just really ask and implore you to consider, what is higher and better use? And I can tell you that when one of your loved ones needs an ambulance, when your business or your home is on fire, when your child has had a car accident, there is no higher and better use than assuring that fire EMS is available in your community. Thank you very much.
Thanks for you, chief, for indulging the question. I appreciate that, chief. I've got one more for you. This one's about your favorite topic, which is financing and the topic of the day.
Okay, you sure you want to get me started?
Well, you brought it up earlier, so I'm going to go into. I just want to make sure I understood what you were trying to convey.
Yeah.
You brought up the idea of not extending our agreement, which I think we're probably not in a position to do that here or this week. And maybe I need a little help from Julie, Ron, or Dirk here. But I think the premise of your argument was that we would actually, as we paid down our existing agreement relative to the increase of your tax levy, that as we paid that down annually, it would reduce this amount or the bond, bonding capacity over time. I just, I don't know if the bond financing actually works that way. Other types of financings don't, where you're buying down interest first. And can anybody speak to that, Julie perhaps, or Dirk?
I think that was a question I had jotted down to ask Mr. Weiser when we get him back on the phone here.
Okay, so that.
So when we get into our second hearing.
Okay, so maybe you don't.
And I certainly misspoke if I represented myself at all as a financial expert. I am not, clearly.
Well, as a suggestion, I just want to acknowledge it.
I just, I think that the point that I was trying to make is that, is that if we're in a situation where you are limited by the amount of money that you're agreeing to and hold, so how much per year times how many years you're encumbering that, I think that as each year passes by, you're reducing that by a certain amount. And although I would love to, I'm not charging you any interest. So that was the point that I was trying to make. And I apologize if I got into a field that I didn't have any business in.
I always want to make sure I understood your point. So thanks, chief, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure. The issue at hand is about extending this agreement beyond 11 years. And I'm not sure we can actually come to consensus on that without understanding the second part of the question of the mill levy. Because from what I understood in all the discussions is it was important to have the duration of that contract being in the duration of the extension of the bond, I would guess.
I believe, I think I can answer that.
Okay.
The issue for extending the contract was intimately connected with the financing for the construction of the station. That in turn depends on the site on which we would build because there are additional costs for one site compared to the other, at least in terms of the cost to the fire district and the cost to the city. The, you know, if we, you know, the motivation for extending the contract was to align the duration of the contract with the duration of financing.
Right.
And we've now run into a major obstacle on that path. The other element of that would have been the, what the payment would be going forward, which not only included the possible increased mill levy, but also any adjustment in the annual payment from the city to the fire district around this potential lease purchase agreement. You know, this, you know, that was supposed to be part of what we were talking about today. And we don't have it because it's just so complicated to put together. So what I believe I've heard the chief say is that we could make a different modification to the, or actually, one of the, one of the two, one of the modifications that we were talking about to the agreement was to alter the rate at which the city would contribute to the fire district to align with their proposed mill levy of 8.2 mils. Failing that, we're paying 5.7 and the other people who are being served by the district are being asked to pay 8.2. That's a very tough sell. So the, so it is still within our purview to, I believe, to consider making one alteration in the contract, which is to change from 5.7 to, you know, change the specification, subject to the vote of the district, from 5.7 to 8.2 mils. So we would be in fiscal alignment with every, you know, so everybody who's being served by the district is paying, paying the same amount for the same services.
So in that case then, we wouldn't be taking the, we wouldn't necessarily be taking it off the table. We would be changing the discussion. We wouldn't be withdrawing the extension, or say, well, we would, we would change it. We would change, we would.
You're not changing the term, you're just changing the amount of bills.
Do we have to go to the voters for that?
Yes.
Yes.
And part of the contract, the contract is currently written, says that we will pay in on our assessed valuation at 5.7 mils. And if we do not alter the contract, that's where we are.
I have a question for the city manager. Can we do any of that? If we don't extend our contract and we just run our 11, our 11 years out, we went to the voters, can we ask them to just raise the mil, the mils to 2.5?
Well, there'll be two questions. One question would be to change the agreement to go, as the mayor indicated, from 5.7 to 8.2. The second question would be, do you want to raise your property taxes by 2.5?
2.5. And so for me, for example, I've already studied this. My mill, total mill, I pay about $70 a year to the city of Durango for my property taxes. And so that's about $5 a month. And it would double for me if I, I was voting for the 2.5 mil increase. So you'd have to know what you pay individually, but that's, that's, I've already studied my own property taxes. So I, $70 a year is a great deal, living in the city with the amenities, for our city property taxes. So is that something, I mean, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. That's the way it feels up here, anyway.
I might suggest the second hearing was on this question of the mill levy.
Okay.
And I understand that it's difficult to act on any of these without acting on them altogether. So we haven't closed the hearing on this issue yet. But I think the mayor accurately stated that, I think what the fire district is asking is indeed that we seek a 2.5 mill levy increase from our voters and that we allocate that to pay an increase under the contract or whatever term we can get out of the debt limit. I do think that does implicate, and based on Mr. Weiser's advice, it does impact your bonding capacity. And we can refine that question some more. We got an email that says he's available till 5 with a cell number. So one suggestion I might have is that unless there's any more testimony on this topic, we close this hearing. And then you could defer, I think, action on this issue until after your second hearing, if you want to. I don't think you're compelled to take action on that right now. Or take whatever action you want to take later. But just a suggestion in case we want to ask other questions about it.
So procedurally, procedurally, it would be okay for us to continue, I guess, would we be actually continuing this hearing until later today?
You could do that.
And so that we could reopen this conversation once we've heard about the mill levy.
I would suggest that you could take that action. I mean, all you're going to be, you know, all the action that has been suggested in the agenda documentation is that you consider giving direction to staff on how to proceed. So if you want to instruct us, and that would include you working with Mr. Weiser to put together language, bring back to you, and, well, we have to put together an agenda document in about two days to do this. We'll be moving very quickly. I would suggest that you could defer action on this item until after you have the other hearing and then take action that might be more coherent.
Okay, I think that's, certainly that makes sense at this point. I, I think that's, that's, certainly that makes sense at this point.
So, would you, like recess from this item until later? Right, I would suggest a recess from this item, close the hearing, recess from this item, have the second hearing, just as a suggestion, and then take up this item and the other item, either together or separately. I hope that makes sense.
I think it does.
It makes sense.
Okay, in that case, I will close the hearing on the issue of extending the fire district with an understanding that we will give direction from sta, direction to staff, if any, at the end of the next public hearing, which will hopefully further inform our thinking on the subject.
And then we'll get, we'll get Dee on the line, and then you can open the second public hearing.